Okay, I will call the meeting to order. It is five o'clock. NBUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at NBUSD.org/Board. The open session part of the meeting will begin around seven o'clock. Item B, Public Comment on Closed Session Items. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items?
There is no public comment on closed session items.
All right, seeing that there are none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. All right, we're going to reconvene to open session. Good evening, my name is David T. Gracia, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NBUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at NBUSD.org/Board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Cid Domencos and Francisco Mesa. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions.
Buenas tardes. Momento. Si, buenas tardes, la interpretación en español está disponible para la reunión virtual de la Junta Directiva del Distrito Escolar Unificado de Napa Valley. En un momento, en su computadora aparecerá un icono de un mundo terráqueo. Por favor, haga clic donde dice Spanish o español. Y si está usando una tableta o celular, busque tres puntitos desde la aplicación Zoom y bajo Language Interpretation o Interpretación de Idioma, por favor de seleccionar español. Gracias, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Vera Morales, Executive Assistant?
Yes, Student Board Member McGrath.
Present.
Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Riser.
Present.
Trustee Shu.
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Present.
Trustee Hart.
Present.
Trustee Gonzales Marias.
Present.
Coram, present, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. All right. Thank you all for joining us tonight for our NBUSD Board meeting. First item is E1, Report on Closed Session. Trustee Riser, do you have a report on closed session items?
Yes. In closed session, the board approved an agreement to resolve a student's educational claims. Sorry, D2A Personnel. In closed session, the board took action to approve the following staff recommendation effective the 2023-24 school year. We appoint the appointment of Aris Beth Coro to the position of Principal at Napa Valley Language Academy. The appointment of Andrew Goff to the position of interim principal at American Canyon High School. The appointment of Linda Pete to the position of Assistant Principal at American Canyon High School. And the appointment of Dean Gore to the position of Assistant Principal at American Canyon High School.
Dr. Masetti, do any of those folks want to address the board at this time?
Yes, on behalf of the Napa Valley Unified School District, we want to congratulate and welcome all of these last round, the last round of administrative hires. We have a couple of them with us here this evening, and so I want to invite them to address the board. If we can have Mr. Dean Gore, the new Assistant Principal at American Canyon High School, address the board.
Ah, yes, I'm Dean Gore, and I want to thank you for this great opportunity, and I'm really looking forward to working with Napa Valley School District, keep growing and serving the school and the community to my best ability. Thank you so much.
Excellent, welcome, Mr. Gore, to the NBUSD family and team. We also see that we may have Ms. Linda Pete, Mr. Gore's colleague, the other part of the ACHS administrative team. Can we move Linda over, please, so that she can address the board?
Dr. Masetti, I have sent the request, but I'm not getting a response.
Oh, okay, maybe it's not that Linda, so, okay. I was assuming it was, and we'll take that as a note. And thank you, Mr. Gore, for being here. And again, congratulations to all of those being appointed this evening.
All right, we're on then to E2, Flag Slute. Trustee Jankowicz, can you lead us tonight in our flag salute?
Agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and equal, liberty and justice for all.
Item E3, this meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district's YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at NBUSD.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. Item E4, Approval of the Agenda.
Moved to approve?
Second.
First by trustee Riser, second by trustee Chu. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item E5, Approval of Minutes. E5A, June 21st, 2023.
Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. June, E5B, June 22nd, 2023.
Moved to approve?
Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. E5C, July 12th, 2023.
Moved to approve?
Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstention, my son.
And what about trustee Jankowitz?
I abstain as well.
Perfect. Motion passes. E5D, August 3rd, 2023.
Moved to approve? Second.
All right, first by trustee Riser, second by trustee Hart. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
Motion passes. E5E, August 4th, 2023.
Moved to approve?
Second.
First by trustee Riser, second by trustee Hart. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions?
Abstain.
Trustee Gonzalez Mars? August 4th?
Oh, it was the second, but yes, I abstain.
Thank you. Motion passes. E6, Recognition of Visitors and Employee Organizations. Dr. Masetti, do we have any visitors in attendance?
Tonight, our fantastic labor leaders from CSCA and NVEA were unable to join us, but tonight here in the boardroom, we do have our labor leaders from NAPS, and I'd like to invite them to come up to the podium and address the board. We have outgoing President Ms. Leslie Walder who's joining us, and she is not alone tonight because she has the new president, Ms. Jennifer Kahn, who will also be addressing the board this evening. Thank you so much for being here with us tonight.
Can you hold on, I'm not sure your mic is on.
That was my dry run.
You can start over again.
Okay, good evening, thank you so much, Dr. Masetti. Good evening, President Gracia, members of the Board of Education, student member McGrath, Dr. Masetti again, and members of the executive cabinet, and to all the Napa Valley Unified School District community. Leslie Walder, I am the outgoing president of NAPS, and our membership voted back in May and elected unanimously a new president, and that is the wonderful Jennifer Kahn. Jen Kahn brings with her a broad range of skills, knowledge, and experience. She has time as a classroom teacher for students with emotional disturbance. She has time outside of the school district, working with our youth in juvenile detention. And she brings knowledge, energy, enthusiasm, a keen intellect, and it's an amazing ability to attend and listen, to take in information, to process it in real time. I learn from her, and I'm so honored to be able to introduce her this evening and to say just thank you to everyone here for your support, time, kindness, indulgence, the opportunities to learn and to grow. This truly is a place of lifelong learning. So with no further ado, Jen Kahn.
Thank you so much, Leslie. I'll get the order down, but thank you so much for having me here, and thank you to the NAPS membership for offering me the opportunity to serve as president. I'm really excited as a former NBUSD student, current NBUSD parent, former educator, and currently in my role as a behavior specialist. I look forward to continuing working with everyone to support our students and the NBUSD community, so I'm really excited to start this school year, and I will be seeing you everywhere. Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Kahn, we're so happy to have you on board. And Ms. Walder, thank you so much for all of your leadership over the course of the last couple of years. It's just been an absolute honor and pleasure to work with you, and you've made such a positive impact, and we are so grateful that we've had the opportunity. You were our president through the pandemic, one of our presidents that we worked closely with through the pandemic. And if it wasn't for the, just the knowledge that you bring to the table, the willingness to listen, and your willingness to closely collaborate, we would not have been able to solve a lot of complex dilemmas in service to our students. So, you know, please leave this position knowing that you have made a tremendous impact. You have big shoes to follow, Ms. Kahn, but we have a lot of faith and confidence. We know that this is going to be a seamless transition because of the degree of collaboration within NAPS. So thank you for your leadership.
Okay, we're now on to-
Hang on, hang on, we also have a member of the Boy Scouts of America Troop that is led by President Gracia visiting.
Oh, I was unaware that we had that special guest, so I don't know. Do you want to handle this one, President Gracia?
Sure, so we have Will Walter and his mother Amy, who have come to visit tonight so they can see how this process happens. Welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, now we're on to item G, which is Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. Trustee Riser, do we receive any public comment on a non-agenda item?
No, public comment on non-agenda items were submitted via email before 8:00 a.m. this morning.
Okay. In that case, Mr. Michaels, did we receive, do we have anyone who is interested in making public comments?
We have no public comment on non-agenda items.
Okay. And seeing that we have none in the boardroom, we'll move on to item H, which is Reports. Item H1, Board of Education and Student Board Representative. Student Board Member McGrath, will you please begin your tenure with your first report?
Absolutely. Hello, everyone, Finn McGrath, I am the student board rep this year. I am a rising senior at Napa High, and I'm very grateful for this opportunity, and I'm looking forward to a great year. I had the pleasure of participating in a two-day workshop last week with all of the members of the board, and I got to meet them and talk to them, and that was very helpful. I also got to know the student board member alternate, Mistura, who I'll be working alongside. She is a rising senior at American Canyon, and she's very involved with her school and her community, and I am looking forward to working with her. One of her goals for this year is to establish better communication between the student body and the district, and in doing so, having more student voices represented through our positions, which I very much agree with. As we close out the summer, I just wanted to share something that was shared with me by a Napa High student that I thought was very important to bring up here. And that was, they expressed to me that they were very grateful for the summer programs and opportunities that have been offered and supported by the Napa Valley Education Foundation. And this student does choir, and they said that it meant a lot to them to be able to give back by performing at fundraisers and coming back to coach elementary and middle schoolers. So I just wanted to bring that up to highlight the importance of having summer programs for our students so that they're involved and participate in an activity year round. This is something that is of value to many students, and I just wanted to stress the importance of that in my first meeting, so thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez Mars?
Um, welcome to the daisies here, Finn. We're so excited to have you from having the pleasure of going through the interview process with you and Mistura, and I just really appreciate actually bringing her voice to the conversation here because her involvement in the school district is also pretty amazing. You know, we've been busy, I think, in the summer, and we've did a couple of days of the Arbinger Training that I know most of us will speak on today, but I think I just want to reflect that, how quick the summer went. And I think that it's just reflection of probably how quick this year might go, and so I'm just really looking forward to it, I'm excited, and on we go to start our new school year. So, welcome to this other year that we're having, I know, right? We're looking at each other like we're one more school year, and so just thrilled to be here with you all.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Hart?
All right, so yeah, happy, only six more days till school starts for all the parents and students, teachers, admin, who are getting ready to welcome the students back into the classrooms. As mentioned, we've been kind of busy for our dark month here, July, but the highlight definitely was the two-day workshop with Arbinger Institute where we learned about developing and implementing an outward mindset. I know we all enjoyed having some conversations about what that means and how we can apply them here on the school board. So, looking forward to seeing that being spread throughout the district to some of our classified employees, as well as some of our certified teachers as well. So, that was very exciting, and looking forward to a good upcoming school year, and welcome, Finn.
Thank you.
Concludes my report.
Trustee Gonzalez Mars? Sorry, we already did that. Trustee Jankowitz?
Welcome, Finn. This summer, I will agree that it was brief. I met with Jennifer Stewart to get an overview of all the good work as expressed by Finn, being executed by NBEF. I also met with Kaiser Permanente on the issue of overall health for our students, as well as their commitment to the Mental Health Conference hosted by, yet again, NBEF. I attended the Credit Recovery Summer Graduation Ceremony. Am I echoing? Okay. The Credit Recovery Summer Graduation, and there were some very happy graduates on that Napa High stage. I participated in the NBUSD Strategic Planning Needs Finding Interview with Prospect Studio, and Sonia conducted a very thought-provoking interview. I met with a constituent that had been a Mount George family during the closure, and she wanted to get an update on the district, and she asked really meaningful questions, had great insight, and I really enjoyed hearing her perspective on where we were now and current education issues from a parent perspective. I, along with my fellow trustees, also participated in the California Collaborative School Board interview process and had a great conversation with Joel regarding school board governance. And I, too, participated in the Arbinger Institute training, and it was really a meaningful approach in leadership development, or really human development, that helps its participants to understand that a change in my mindset can truly change outcomes. So it was time well spent, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Chu?
So I also was interviewed by Joel Knudsen for the California Collaborative. I also met with Prospect Studios on NBUSD Strategic Planning. I attended the Arbinger Course, but since I wasn't available when all of you guys are available, I actually got to sit in on the course with the executive cabinet and some of the leadership, a couple in this room from NAPS. And that was wonderful, I really appreciated being in that same room with staff. I think that brings a totally different level of understanding of that course, and I think trustee Gonzalez Mars probably, and trustee Gracia would probably agree. And yesterday, I attended actually a pretty large gathering at American Canyon. First, the ribbon cutting of an all-inclusive playground in Northampton Park. So I invite NBUSD students to go and check out that park, it was really fun. And right afterwards, I attended the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce Meet Me in the Streets. I think it's their second annual, maybe third, where it's basically a street fair in American Canyon. Almost everybody in American Canyon comes out, very fun. But the reason why I went was because I wanted to see what the Chamber of Commerce has been doing with kids' commerce, and it's their program in the spring to educate kids on how to be an entrepreneur. So a lot of our students actually participated in this program, and it's awesome. So I wanted to share some of the things I bought because they were great. There was A&amp;M Studio 29 by Alessandra and Madison, who hand-sewed these scrunchies, well, not hands-sew. They learned how to use a sewing machine and sew scrunchies, so that was fun, a lot of different colors. Ryder Inc., my writer, made these t-shirt. So really fun, they were able to put a heart in there. And the last one was a terrarium by a company named Ivy, whose entrepreneur was Megan, she's one of actually, so I should say, the scrunchie was made by an incoming fourth grader, the t-shirt was made by an incoming fifth grader, and this is made by ACHS students. I think she's a senior this year. And it was just awesome to see all the things that the kids are doing in the summer, and they're definitely, you know, not wasting their time, they're actually being quite productive. So it was a wonderful event, hopefully next year, you know, more people will come out. Maybe you guys can come out and see, and check out what their next iteration of kids' commerce is. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Riser?
Thank you. It's great to be back. Welcome, Student Board Member McGrath, it's wonderful to have you up here on the daisies with us. I also participated in an interview with Joel Knudsen of the California Collaborative on District Reform. He was interested in speaking about school governance and is writing a brief for, on that topic. So had a good conversation with him about governance. Also really enjoyed the two-day Arbinger Institute training that we participated as a board and with our student board members, student board member and alternate. And I just really appreciate the district's offering of opportunities for professional development, sort of all the time, in different ways, different, being exposed to different learning and kind of always striving to improve as an organization and to give people the opportunity to improve and be reflective as individuals within that organization. So I'm grateful for that opportunity, and it was very expansive. And other than that, I can't believe that next Wednesday will be my 15th and final first day of school as an NBUSD parent. My daughter Maya is a rising senior, so that'll be an emotional Wednesday morning for me. But I'm just wishing everybody a wonderful start to the school year because that will have all taken place before the time we're up here again. So that concludes my report.
Trustee Walter?
Well, I too, I too went to the July 12th special meeting and attended the two-day Arbinger Institute workshop and was interviewed by Mr. Joel Knudsen of California Collaboration, who was extremely impressed with the hours. I told him our board put into, into this, it's a job, it's a real job. For which we get much less than minimum wage, but so much personal gratification. And I did, I was on a trip this summer where I was able to meet, actually informally, with a lot of school board members from Los Angeles and the San Francisco Bay Area, and that was a lot of fun. And one thing that impressed me about the LA Board, you know, they're all very, very smart and super competent, but they have so many schools that most of them don't get to visit all of their schools. And I was thinking how fortunate we are that we can, that we do have the time, and, you know, we're compact, and we, and I, and I'm sure they do a good job, but gosh, I just can't imagine not being able to go out and visit every single school because, you know, to me, that is really the most fulfilling part of the job. And I also engaged in a lot of, let's see, we call it, we call it community outreach, and including answering a mass of emails, one of which was from Dr. Christina Howell of Performing Arts at Napa Valley College, and she let me know that that wonderful show we saw, Newsies, that the American Canyon High School students put on got, well, it was, it was, it was at, they were showcased at Festival Napa Valley's Art for All, and it, and she, and I knew that we got covered in the Press Democrat, but I did not realize that we'd also made it into an Instagram post called Broadway Star into Napa Life Forbes, and I certainly didn't know we made it into Town and Country Magazine. And I was, she wanted to make sure that I knew the great work that Summer Hart at American Canyon High School was doing, and I said, not only am I aware of the great work she's done, I even told her she's doing great work, we all really enjoy the shows. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you. So I too attended the interview with Joel Knudsen. They're studying our district around governance. I also attended part of an NCOE board meeting on the 11th of July, and then on the 12th, I attended our special board meeting to discuss closed session items. Then on the 13th, I met with our alternate student board member to help orient her to her new position. On the 25th, I met with the strategic visioning folks who are developing our road to 2030. And then on the 27th and 28th, I did the Arbinger Training with the first cohort, which included some of the executive team and our labor partners. And then on the 1st of August, I attended the NCOE board meeting, and then on the 3rd and 4th, more Arbinger Training, this time with the board. So that's the extent of what I've been up to. I also just wanted to thank, or actually welcome everyone back to school. I know this is a big ramp-up period where everyone is getting ready to welcome back the kids, and I just wanted to let staff know that we appreciate your efforts in getting ready to welcome the kids back to school next year. And that concludes my report. So we'll now move on to H2, Board Representative Reports. H2A, Special Education and Community Advisory Committee.
The committee has not met.
H2B, City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives.
We have not met.
H2C, City of Napa Liaison Representatives. H2D, Town of Yountville Liaison Representatives. And then H3, Superintendent and Executive Staff.
Thank you, President Gracia. So, good evening, NBUSD community, Board of Education, and all of our NBUSD families and staff. I hope everyone enjoyed the last few weeks of summer, and we are just so excited about getting back to school. It's really, I think, for all of us that are in the rhythm of education, it's one of our favorite times of year, and we are filled with excitement in welcoming back our students and families. I hope that everybody was able to relax, catch up with friends and family, and spend time doing what was most important and meaningful for them. My family and I, we created an unforgettable memory of driving 14 hours through Illinois, Indiana, Ohio, Pennsylvania, New Jersey, and then finally, New York, in a U-Haul, as we helped my daughter move to Brooklyn and begin her first job after graduating college, so she's off the family payroll. So yay. I am grateful for the opportunity to spend those special moments with family, and we're just really always grateful to kind of reboot in the summer as we gear up and ramp up for the welcome- and ramp up for the welcoming back to school. As we enter the 2324 school year, I am beginning my sixth year of service here as the NVUSD Superintendent. And I am full of lots of joy, excitement, humility, and hope. This is an exciting year in NVUSD. I really believe that NVUSD is poised for an extraordinary year of learning, discovery, and growth for everyone. And I think the board started alluding to some of the learning or district leadership team alongside our labor partners. And all of us as a school board were able to start accomplishing as we've engaged in professional learning ourselves this summer during the break. Much of the success that we have had over the last few years ties back to the implementation of our 2019-2024 Strategic Plan. And this plan has served our staff, students, families in so many ways, specifically as an anchor during the uncertainty of the pandemic over the last three years. Over the last few years, NVUSD has shifted from financially at risk to financially stable. We've expanded our academic and social emotional learning programs. We've created state of the art technology and digital learning environments at all of our schools. And we've implemented large scale curriculum adoptions across content areas, developed lots lots of systems of support for our students. And we've really invested in large scale professional development days and programs to benefit our student learning and wellness. And we've spent an extraordinary amount of time strengthening our governance, thus serving as a case study for the California Collaborative on District Reform, who is examining us, our practices as a governance team, researching what we do to inform the the state in California about how school districts can be more effective and impactful in their governance work. So thank you to the current strategic plan. This progress has created a really strong and stable foundation. And for this reason, I'm really thrilled to announce that in the 2324 school year, it will be a period of new strategic visioning and planning as we look ahead and prepare to strengthen our system for our students, building upon this very strong foundation that we've built. We recognize that everyone in our community plays a role in the success of our students. And given what we've accomplished over the last few years, we really think it is a perfect time to come back out to the community and reimagine with them the future of education in the NVUSD community. That's why we're going to reimagine the future of the Napa Valley Unified School District alongside our students, our parents and our staff and broader community at large. We are going to be implementing a large scale community engagement process. And we want to ensure that all community members, again, from families to staff to community members, civic leaders, faith leaders, all have an opportunity to contribute and collaborate with us in a meaningful way to create this future vision and our action plan that will guide us in the implementation of that future vision. So please be on the lookout for the various ways that you can contribute to creating our future vision as we plan our, as we continue with our commitment to continuous improvement and our dedication to improving the educational experience for all NVUSD students. And to give you a sense of that work that has launched, I have a video this evening. The video is the work that was conducted in our first session. There are one-on-one interviews that are happening with over 100 individuals in our community. We have started with the school board. Many of the trustees have named the fact that they interviewed with our consultant, Prospect Studio. And that's a key piece to the launch of this work. But another key component is establishing what we call a core team. And that core team will be meeting weekly throughout the course of this entire school year and sort of serving as the anchor team and guide in this deep community engagement and development process that we're going to be engaging in. And so I just want to name on the public record who are the extraordinary individuals who are serving on our core team so that the public is aware and the board is fully aware of who is serving on the core team. These folks have their regular jobs and then they've committed to a deep involvement in the strategic visioning process. So we have Kristin Tekel, our Director of Food Services, Gina DeLuca, Assistant Director in Human Resources, Jordan Michaels, our Chief Technology Officer, Julie Bordes, our Chief Communication Officer, who also is the project lead. Ashley Green, who is a manager in technology as well, Chris Ready, Director in Communications and Community Engagement, Elizabeth Gonzalez, Director in Human Resources, Gloria Aguirre, who's a Director of Operations, Matt Manning, Director of Elementary Curriculum Instruction and English Learner Services, Monica Reddy, Director of Secondary Curriculum Instruction and English Learner Services, Dr. Peter Aboud, Director of Data and Assessment. And we have Susan Miller, Director of Enrollment Services and Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings, who oversees instructional services, Justin Binion, who's our Director of Transportation, Sarah Knox, Director of Intervention and Prevention Services, and Ms. Viviana Lorera, who is the Coordinator of our Parent Engagement. So you see there is a cross section of people across all of the divisions, from Human Resources to Instruction to Operations to Business, who will be leading this work. And so we're really grateful for their commitment. With that being said, we have a video that we put together to create the visual around the the launch of the core team's work a couple of weeks ago. So I'd like to invite Mr. Michaels to play that video for us. I am so excited about the journey that we're about to embark on in the Napa Valley Unified School District. We are about to engage and launch our strategic visioning and planning process. And today we're here with our core team that is going to guide and lead this amazing work. We recognize that every single member in our community plays a role in the success of our students. That is why we've chosen to engage in a process where we are co-designing and co-constraining our vision and plan with our community. We want to make sure that the plan and the vision that we develop is going to be able to guide the educational process for our students just getting started with us that will be with us over the course of the next 10 to 15 years. Those who will be impacted by any change should have a role in shaping that change. Not just sharing the voice, but actually hands-on co-designing our plan and vision with us and alongside us. We don't want this vision and plan to happen to those that are most impacted by the change. We want them to create it with us and for they themselves. So we're excited about launching a process that's going to deeply involve students, young people, those that are most impacted, family members, parents, community members, staff from support staff to administrators to teachers, to members of the Board of Education. And this entire process is going to be grounded in the creativity and the voice of our community.
The most exciting part of this for me is really to engage with the entire community and to think about what the future can look like for our students who are graduating our schools in 14 years. We have so much to offer and I know that we're always continuing to grow and learn. And this opportunity provides us the ability to work with partners to strengthen our systems.
The result of our strategic visioning and planning process will include a graduate, adult, and system portrait, as well as our core values. We want to hear from you. There will be opportunities throughout the year for you to engage with us to share your thoughts and ideas on our strategic visioning. We look forward to engaging you in this work over the course of the school year. Go NVUSD.
Hopefully that excited everyone. And with that, I'm not going to report on anything else because I do not want to steal the thunder of any of my assistant superintendents and or their designees. I know they have a lot to report out on the work that they are accomplishing in their divisions to make sure we have a strong start to the 2324 school year. So we're going to start tonight with Assistant Superintendent Dana Page, who oversees the Human Resources Division.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, President Gracia, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and Student Board Representative McGrath. The Human Resources Department has been very busy all summer long, filling the rest of our vacancies, and we're in very good shape for the start of the school year next week. I just need to give a shout out to several of the HR staff members who have been recruiting in overdrive. Mary Jurecki, Dominique Marcus, Roseanne Crandall, Maria Lara, Alice Calipas, Amanda Rosas, Ellie Peña-Tamayo, and Nancy Crane, as well as all the principals, assistant principals, directors, coordinators, especially from special education, who have worked diligently all summer long over their vacations to secure staff for the sites and the departments. When August rolls around, it's time to start onboarding all these great new employees. And so we kicked that off our first round of employee onboarding, starting at the management conference. The management conference was held on August 2nd and 3rd this year at New Tech High School. It was our first opportunity to get together as a team. And we received a lot of positive feedback, particularly highlighting the content around the NVUSD strategic plan development process they learned about, hearing about the board annual priorities for the school year and the outward mindset leadership work that we're poised to do and roll out throughout our organization with the Arvinger Institute. This year, HR also held a special onboarding session for brand new managers in NVUSD, eight of whom came from outside of the district and six who were promoted from teaching and counseling positions from within NVUSD. I'm very excited about the incredible management team that we have in place this year. And along those same lines, earlier this week, we welcomed 76 new teachers, counselors, psychologists, nurses, social workers, and speech language pathologists to our new certificated employee academy. During this two-day onboarding event, we introduced new employees to our district's policies, procedures, culture, and of course, to each other to start building those relationships and the strong team that we rely on and collaborate with throughout our work. And we have a variety of guest speakers from various departments who provide essential information from their areas of expertise. So many of them, I can't even list all of them. But our new certificated staff, I think, were really impressed by the number of people who showed up and really appreciated all of the support that they were provided and all the warm welcomes that they got from everybody. I would like to commend Kate Gogger, who is our new coordinator of educator talent development for her outstanding leadership and planning this event, and HR Executive Assistant Nora Stragoning, who helped tremendously with all the logistical details. And we will be beginning our monthly onboarding for new classified employees starting September 20th. We continue that throughout the year as we hire classified employees throughout the year. We look forward to welcoming them as well. And finally, I'd like to invite everyone to the Napa Farmers Market tomorrow, where NVUSD will be on hand to promote our schools.
Saturday, Saturday.
Oh, sorry. I was one day ahead. Sorry, wishful thinking. No. Saturday. And we will be promoting our schools' programs and job opportunities. And you can't miss us because we will be the only booth there with our own school bus. Children and their parents are welcome aboard the bus for storytime. And full disclosure, the bus won't actually be driving around the farmer's market, but it's still a thrilling experience to hop on a bus if you don't normally get the opportunity to do so. And we will be on hand to read stories to the children as they come visit us. So I'd love to see you there. And just speaking of buses, I just also want to say that this is the first year in many, many years that we were able to start the year without our Director of Transportation having to be tapped to drive a school bus because we have enough school bus drivers recruited to start the school year. So, you know, we'd like some extras. That's a big one. That's a big one. And and we're just very excited about that. We are still recruiting the bus drivers because, you know, you can never have too many. So thank you very much. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Page, and thank you for all the work in human resources to make sure that we're staffed for the upcoming school year. Next, we have Mr. Matt Manning, who's here on behalf of Assistant Superintendent Pat Andrew Dennings, who will provide the report for the Instructional Services Division.
Thank you. Good evening, President Gracia, Board of Trustees, Dr. Masetti, and welcome to Student Board Member McGrath. The instructional wing is abuzz with excitement as we prepare to officially welcome students and site staff to the 2324 school year. It was only a couple of weeks ago that we successfully wrapped up our elementary and secondary summer programs for students. Our summer offerings were well received with increased enrollment and attendance across sites and programs. We look forward to sharing a full report with the board at the August 24th meeting as part of our expanded learning opportunities program update. The past week has been filled with rich professional development opportunities for school site teams to come together and engage in learning aligned to our NVUSD strategic plan and board priorities. During this upcoming year, we continue to invest in building strong systems to support learning and achievement. Over 100 NVUSD TK12 principals, assistant principals, and teacher leaders engaged in PLC training on Monday. Staff explored mindsets that build collective teacher efficacy and learn protocols for leading PLCs through learning sprints, a data-driven decision-making methodology. The district-wide training will allow learning sprints to grow from math and English to all content areas as we seek to improve performance outcomes for all students, especially in math, reading, and language development. It was particularly powerful to have elementary, middle, and high school teams learning and planning together in the same room as we align practices vertically TK12. Over the past two weeks, Math 1, 2, and 3 teachers began their first round of coaching and planning with the new high school math instructional materials. On August 3rd, a team of Math 1, 2, and 3 teachers came together to align the Carnegie Learning Scope and Sequence with the NVUSD Priority Standards. In order to support teachers as they implement Carnegie Learning with integrity, Carnegie Learning led implementation training and planning on August 8th and 10th. The focus is on maintaining the rigor and intent of the program while also allowing for adjustments to be made. Teachers engaged in learning around math book, Mathia, and Edulastic with a focus on instructional practices that support pacing, discourse, and collaboration. All staff will complete this training by the end of the first week of September. Thank you to the Board of Education for supporting this adoption and intensive coaching support for Math 1, 2, and 3 teachers. On Tuesday of this week, we hosted a successful district ride relaunch of Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports, or PBIS. We had over 140 participants, including elementary, middle, and high school teachers, counselors, social workers, parent liaisons, campus safety specialists, and site administrators. Site teams are leveraging PBIS to define, teach, and reinforce clear expectations for student behavior and support our continued focus on developing the NVUSD ecosystem of Carignio. As we prepare to start a new school year, the instructional team has a clear plan for how we are going to impact student learning outcomes and the metrics by which we will measure our progress. We wish you all a very happy new school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Manning, for reminding us of all the hard work that's happening in instruction, again, to start the 2324 school year strong. Next, we have Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mike Pearson, who oversees Operational Services.
Good evening, President Gracia, NVSD Board of Education Trustees, Dr. Masetti, Student Board Representative Finn McGrath, and members of the NVSD community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide you with an update with Operational Services. Well, welcome back, everyone. Operational Services, excited to start the 2324 school year. We trust all of you had a restful, relaxing, and rejuvenating summer break. As it is every year, June, July, and August are busy months for Operational Services as directors and employees and in our divisions are prepared to open a school year. Like to briefly review some of the activities today. Custodial and service supply have been busy inspecting, cleaning, and sanitizing offices and buildings while teacher while teacher materials, equipment, and furniture have been shuffled from one site to another. Maintenance and grounds has been completing work orders at extremely high rate to ensure every school site is in tip-top shape and ready to operate at a high level. Additionally, curb appeal and grounds of every campus is being spruced up to welcome back students and staff. Food service has been busy designing nutritious menus, ordering necessary ingredients, and preparing for when the majority of the food service employees return to the week of August 14th. And in addition, our food service department will be participating in the Chef Van Foundation Healthy School Food Pathway Pre-Aprenticeship Program, which is the first of its kind in the nation. The program provides a paid professional learning experience that aims to prepare California residents for job growth, job opportunities, and healthy scratch cook school food programs. To be eligible to host pre-apprentices, the district has to show a commitment of working towards an increased level of scratch cooking in their meal program. And the pre-apprenticeship, the pre-apprenticeship, a program registered with both the California Division of Apprenticeship Standards and the University, excuse me, US Department of Labor, offers an exciting way to receive education and paid hands-on experience in operating K-12 school meal programs. The program's going to last about six weeks, seven weeks, excuse me, and includes a minimum pay of $16 per hour for on-the-job training, as well as online courses and live virtual training sessions. And NVSD plans to have up to five participants in this program, and they can be actually our current employees who want to participate in it as well. In transportation, Assistant Superintendent Page takes some of my thunder, but that's okay. Yes, just, yes, Director of Transportation Justin Binion is very happy, at least at this point, not to dawn the yellow jacket and the yellow suit to drive a bus. But they have been busy setting bus routes for the 2324 school year and are now in the process of ensuring all student registration materials are completed for individuals who will be transported to and from school. And lastly, the operations team and the directors of my, along with myself, have along with myself, have been meeting, begun meeting with site principals to kick off the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. During the hour-long meeting that we have with site principals, topics being discussed range from work orders, curb appeal, transportation routes, field trips, head custodian meetings, food service requirements, and facility uses. With so many first-year and second-year site principals that need to meet directly with site administrators is really important to ensure we are all aligned with our roles and responsibilities. To date, feedback on these meetings has been very positive. So we're going to continue to do that. We have about twenty-seven more sites to go to. So anyways, thank you. And this concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. And again, thank you to your division's strong efforts in making sure all twenty-six buildings are ready for our students and families. And it's been, it's been great to see Mr. Binion in regular clothing, not his uniform. Yeah, he really is. So it's great. Okay, and last but surely not least, we have Mr. Rob Manguala, our Assistant Superintendent of Business Services, who will close out staff reports this evening.
Well, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to update the board and the community. The technology team has been very busy this summer preparing our district technology for the upcoming school year. The complete team effort has allowed us to get all elementary classrooms and secondary libraries appropriate devices for one-to-one instruction, inventory all of our tech devices, and complete network upgrades across the district. Our team is excited to be out in force next week to ensure our students and staff are supported and everyone has a smooth start of the school year. All staff should keep an eye out for our upcoming technology newsletter for more information and what we have in store for this year. The enrollment team has been busy all summer supporting families as they register for school. In July, the team attended an event with Migrant Ed and the Napa Farm Workers' Foundation to help migrant families learn about the enrollment process and register for school. This week, community liaisons have been assessed, have been assisting in the enrollment center and helping to support families in American Canyon with enrollment hours at Canyon Oaks Elementary. The data and assessment team is preparing, is busy preparing for the start of the school year. Data confirmation was officially launched earlier this week, and nearly fifty percent of the families have already completed the process, even though school hasn't even begun yet. Data confirmation serves as our primary method for updating families, family contact information, and for collecting income information from families, which directly impacts funding to the district. The team is also busy preparing all of the digital tools and clever for next week so that teachers and students can access digital curriculum and tools by the start of the school year. The business office is working to close the books and will bring the data to September 14th board meeting. This concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Okay, and now we'll move on to item I, which is approval of the consent agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on a roll call vote unless discussion of an item or items is requested by a board member.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee two, second by trustee Hart. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
We do have a public comment. First speaker is Karina Servente. Go ahead, please.
Um, I, I don't know if I missed the general public comment. I don't have public comment on this item.
General public comment already happened. So you have to comment on this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Michaels, is there any more public comment?
There's no further public comment.
And seeing none in the boardroom, Ms. Morales, can we please have a roll call vote on this item?
Yes, Student Board Member McGrath.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Ricer.
Aye.
Trustee Shu.
Aye.
Trustee Jankowicz.
Aye.
Trustee Hart.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez-Mares.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morales. We'll now move on to item J, Presentation and Discussion Items. J1, General Services. J1A, Twenty Twenty Three, Twenty Four, Board Annual Priorities.
Great, thank you, President Gracia. I'm going to go ahead and do the presentation from my seat here. This is our annual tradition. Now, I think it's our fourth year doing this. Where at the first board meeting, I announced to the community the work that the school board conducted back in June to commit to board annual priorities for the upcoming year. And just to be clear, these board annual priorities serve a couple of purposes. First and foremost, they provide the focus for our organization. This is the means by which our staff learns what are going to be the focus priorities that we intend to accomplish in the upcoming school year. And secondly, they also serve as the criteria for the superintendent performance evaluation. So we appreciate that alignment because it ensures accountability in getting the work done. And so we're very, very thankful for this structure. I think all of the staff have expressed over the course of the last couple of years the value that this has added to the work that we do to know that we're working in alignment and cohesion with what the board wants to accomplish. And so as we bring items forward throughout the course of the upcoming school year, whether it's in the form of action items or presentations, we will keep these priorities the main thing. If I were to quote previous trustee, trustee Joe Schunk, who used to say, you know, let's keep the main thing the main thing. And a lot of the time, there's a lot of competing interests in school districts, a lot of potentials for distraction. And what we know as a team, and that cascades out to our staff or school site building leaders, our principals, or assistant principals, that despite all of the issues that can emerge and cause some distraction in the school system, we stay focused on these annual priorities in order to make sure that we are making an impact on students' educational journey and outcomes. So with that, I'm excited to announce the twenty-three, twenty-four priorities that our team will be focusing on and continuously reporting on progress to the school board. Next slide, please. So just as a reminder, these priorities are a manifestation. They are, they are the ways in which we implement and manifest the spirit of our mission and vision. So I always like to start out with the anchor of our current mission and vision statement. Of course, with all the strategic action planning going on, you know, some of this might evolve in the upcoming years ahead. But for now and for the last five years, this has been the mission and vision statement that has guided our work. We are deeply committed to transforming lives by instilling and inspiring lifelong learning in every student and making sure that our different ways of investing time, energy, resources are all focused on making sure that we're breathing life into this aspirational mission, mission, and vision statement. Next slide. Before I get into the annual priorities, in my opening comments this evening and as the, as part of my superintendent report, I talked about the gift of our last five-year strategic plan that we adopted back in December of 2018, and it's guided our work from 2019 to our current present. And it will help us finish out implementation of this plan through the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So this plan has really been at work from 2019 to 2024. And it has six broad-based goals that have served, again, I think I named as our anchor in getting a lot of the improvements done and accomplished here in Napa Valley Unified. So as a reminder, I want to show the community those six goals. Go ahead, next slide. We have our first goal around student learning achievement and access. Our second goal around the HR work, effective employee relations and resource management. Our goal three around robust communication, community engagement, and advocacy. Our fourth goal around finances and facilities that we describe as tactical, proactive, and efficient asset management. Goal five, our commitment around building equity-centered leadership and an inclusive organizational culture. And then goal six around governance, strategic impactful governance and policy implementation. And these six goals have stayed the same since 2019. I'll momentarily show you how the annual priorities that lay out the focus priorities and initiatives of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year are all expected to align to one of these six broader goals. Next slide, please. And just as a reminder, who's kind of the team that does this visioning as we think about the roles and responsibility of our governance team, which is made up by the superintendent and the seven board members to my left. The, the role of the governance team is to set vision and direction, not to get into the responsibility of actually implementing it, but to set that vision in that direction, sort of at fifty thousand feet of the, in the air. I'd say that's what our six goals do, serve at that fifty thousand feet in the air. And then the annual priorities kind of bring us down to maybe, you know, twenty thousand feet where we're choosing the ways in which we're going to implement initiatives that support those broader, bigger goals and really kind of get closer to execution in that one respective year to make sure that we're not just having a plan that's kind of out there as a big idea plan, but that we're actually getting into execution and implementation year to year. And I'm very thankful because this is, a lot of the times, school boards adopt a strategic plan. It lasts for five years. And then the board is kind of like, okay, we did our visioning work and, you know, there's the big plan. Go to work, staff, over the course of the next five to seven years, whatever the period is. But our school board, our governance team, convenes every year, kind of digs deep into that strategic plan. And based on the data and the information of the past year or the recent, you know, past couple of years, they dig back into the work and they say, okay, based on these broader goals that we've set, what do we want to be the priorities in this upcoming year? That takes time every year to reengage, roll up their sleeves, and bring the clarity that these priorities bring annually to our organization in terms of what we're going to focus on and what's going to be the main thing. So thank you to the trustees for all of that work. Next slide, please. All right, so what are the annual priorities? I'm excited to share them this evening. We have six total, and then I'll talk a little bit about governance and the superintendent's governance standard that we focus on. So the annual priority for twenty-three, twenty-four, the first one, is improving and targeting mathematics support and progress during key transition years, second to third, fifth to sixth, and eighth to ninth. And those are grades that I'm referring to there at the end of that description. It's, of course, connected to broader goal, strategic goal, number one, around student achievement, learning, and access. I just want to name here that the board has focused on an annual priority the last two years. This is going to be the third year that we have an annual priority focused on mathematics improvement. We have a lot of improvement to make in mathematics and the educational outcomes that we're getting for our students. We know that students' performance in mathematics can serve as a gatekeeper to future post-secondary opportunities. We know it's fundamental to kind of their core knowledge that they leave our school system with. So the board remains deeply committed to that. Notice the customization, kind of the targeting this year after two years of more broad-based improvement work in mathematics. We know that in these years, based on the data, as kids shift out of primary to the intermediate years, as they shift from elementary school to middle school, and as they shift from middle school to high school, we see in the data that our students kind of slip back. And so we want to really examine that and see what scaffolds and supports need to be put specifically in these transition years to keep our students making forward progress in their mathematics learning. We always like to articulate what the long-range impact of this annual focus will be, assuming we do it well. So next slide, please. Why do we, why did we choose this priority? Is because this is the long-range impact we're trying to have with this short-term priority is improve TK through twelve mathematic program and student mathematic achievement outcomes for our students. Next slide. Our second annual priority might feel broad for an annual priority, but it's serving as a kind of fundamental launch of what we can anticipate will be a focus over the course of the next few years, assuming we're data-driven. We know that reading and writing, just like math, is core to our students leaving. It's a strong knowledge base that our students need to leave our system with. And that is also an area where we need to make dramatic improvement. You know, literacy is a right. It's a right, you know? And every student has the right to literacy. And we want to make sure that we are focusing on some foundational efforts in twenty-three, twenty-four that are going to strengthen what we're doing with our students in terms of their reading and their writing. The ability to read and write is fundamental to the success that they will have in life, not only professionally, but also in terms of their happiness, their health. This is all really, really critical for them to feel strong, competent, and confident in, in the areas of reading and writing. So we're excited about dedicating an annual priority for the first time to reading and writing specifically. And that is, of course, also connected to goal number one of our strategic plan, student achievement, learning, and access. The long-range impact we're trying to have. Next slide, please. Is improve those educational outcomes of all students, specifically those literacy rates, because we view literacy as a right for all students. And, you know, not leaving third grade proficient in reading. The data and the research tells us that students that don't need third grade at, reading at grade level, we can predict all the challenges that they're going to have in their future. So we want to disrupt that. So, we want to disrupt that. So, we want to focus on that. Okay, next slide, please. Annual priority number three is described as supporting multilingual learner, language development and academic access. Of course, also, you can see, this is our third priority focused on instructional improvement. The research shows that when a board sets direction that is overwhelmingly about instruction, they are more likely to move the needle on impacting student achievement levels. So, third goal also focused on that first strategic, I'm sorry, third annual priority also focused on that student achievement goal in our strategic plan. And this is an important annual priority. It's building upon some of the work that we did last year, in the last couple of years of adopting a multilingual learner master plan. Almost a third of our students are multilingual learners. That means that they're coming to school. They're not only wearing the hat of their academic development, but also school is where they develop their proficiency in English, because they have the asset and the gift of being multilingual and having another language at home. And so, school becomes the environment where they acquire and become proficient in English. And so, approximately, almost a third of our students are current multilingual learners, but there is also a significant proportion of students in our system who were once multilingual learners and got reclassified. And we want to make sure that we continue to support them, because learning language is really can be a lifelong process, right? And I know that coming from a bilingual, a Spanish bilingual home myself, where I started to learn English mostly in school as a five-year-old. So, we are going to focus on multilingual learners and making sure that they have the supports necessary to be more successful in school, because the data shows that we have improvement to make in service to them. So, what's our long-range impact? Next slide, please. It's to ensure that our multilingual learners successfully reclassify. That means that they move from being classified as a multilingual learner to being proficient in English, right? And there's indicators and tests that we use to reclassify them. So, we want to reclassify them. And, you know, our goal is to get as many students leaving elementary school proficient in English, so they have that strong foundation as they go into, move into the complexity of, of middle and high school. And we want to support their long-term academic achievement. So, we're grateful that the board saw that as a need and has supported a commitment to our multilingual learner community here in NVUSD, because they are a significant proportion of our, of our learning community. Next slide, please. So, this is the fourth annual priority, also focused on student achievement, because that's where the board can make a difference. If they focus on student achievement overwhelmingly in terms of vision setting and priority setting, then there, we're more likely to impact student performance. So, this last kind of instructionally-focused annual priority is innovation and alignment of career readiness programs. It's an exciting time in the world of career readiness. The, the state of California is doing kind of a retooling around career readiness. We want to leverage that kind of window of opportunity and really examine our career readiness programs in the district, evaluate them for quality and impact, and learn from that evaluation. And then assess how can we build deeper, more meaningful career readiness programs that are current, that potentially connect us more deeply to our community? We have world-class industry here in the Napa Valley. And so, we, you know, beyond the classrooms, outside of the walls of our classrooms and schools, there is so much to be learned in this valley because of the industry opportunities that are presented here. And it doesn't necessarily mean that we're trying to, you know, solely produce graduates who will work here. It's great if they come back to their community and serve and, and pick a career that can connect to the world-class industries that we have here, hospitality, tourism, viticulture. However, even if we use the valley outside of the schools and create more of a connection between the broader community and our schools and create this kind of, you know, extended learning environment for our students, whatever they learn here in a real-world learning environment, they can take anywhere in their future. So, we're really excited about retooling this, reimagining it, getting it really current and fresh. And I'm grateful also that the board chose to focus on this, given some of California's statewide focus, which we'll be able to leverage to accomplish really good work at the local level in this area. So, our next slide, please, articulates again why, alignment of college and career readiness program to successfully prepare students for life post-secondary. And I just have to sidebar here for a minute. I had the pleasure of being with Director Monica Ready yesterday evening. And some of the seeds have already been planted around the improvements in this area. And we have a summer mentor program where students are participating. I think Finn had alluded to it in his, his opening comments when he gave the student trustee report around having students get hired as a, in the summer to be a mentee and work with a mentor in different areas. We provided opportunities where the school district itself is opening up its technology department, its transportation department, its maintenance and grounds opportunity, department. And we are having students come in over the summer and intern with our staff in those respective areas. So, they're getting exposure to tech, to the trades. And so, we held a little graduation ceremony for those students. Ms. Ready worked with MDF to organize that. And I have to say, it was one of my favorite moments in my five years as superintendent to hear the, the students came up and talked about the impact of the summer internship opportunity. And it just blew their minds to be able to learn kind of in that format. They talked about leadership development, just financial literacy, just being able to do some hands-on work beyond just traditional learning of the classroom. Very, very compelling stories. And then we left here and Ms. Ready and I went over to Silverado, where we met the families and students who participated in the hospitality and tourism mentor program with several of the industry partners here in the valley. We're very poised to do that. Silverado was one of the, the mentor industry partners, and they were the, also, they weren't the only one, but they were the host of the event. And it was so powerful to hear, again, those students. We, I don't know, Monica, what was the number there, thirty-plus, over thirty? Yep, and we just had a sprinkle of them in a pilot model last summer. You might remember, we did that presentation here to the school board approximately almost a year ago. So, now our numbers are, are in, you know, the dozens of students participating. We heard students just talk about what an exciting opportunity it is. I loved how one student said, you know, I don't want to go into hospitality and tourism. I actually have an interest in being a registered nurse in healthcare, but I learned so much about just hospitality and tourism. You learn how to care for others, and I'm going to be able to take that skill and cross it over into healthcare. So, that's just one example of the stories that were shared. So, again, last night was one of my favorite nights as superintendent to kind of hear the impact of these intern opportunities. And Ms. Ready's done an extraordinary job partnering with other leaders in our organization to grow the program, and the, the potential for scaling this is extraordinary. This annual priority is really going to help us do this while we continue to connect with the broader community to focus on the education of our students. So, great work, fantastic work, and we're just getting started.
Dr. Mercedes, could I? So, I just wanted, I just want to remind the board that last year, this actually led to two of these interns actually receiving jobs in our, in our very own district. And that was one of my goals when I, when I wanted to see if we could be part of this, is to develop a pipeline for our own employees. So, we were actually able to hire one of the, a transportation driver, who was actually a high school student at the time. And we hired him, and he was driving as a high school student, middle school and elementary school students. And then we also hired a student to be a part of our grounds department. And he had just completed his time at Valley Oak High School. And then he was out working with us. So, I, it just, I was, I, I echo, I had to leave unfortunately quickly after the event. But I echo Dr. Mercedes, you know, one of those, like, it's just a really great event, and the, the, the opportunities are just limitless. The other thing I do want to mention, though, is the responsibility it provides for some employees who have very little in, in contact with students on a regular basis. That responsibility changes the game for some of our employees, who all of a sudden have a much different role and responsibility to be in, in being a mentor, a coach, an advocate, all those sorts of things that we want our teachers to be. And now, some of our grounds, some of our maintenance employees, some of our transportation, our tech employees, and, and et cetera, are participating in that very role. So, I think it's also a huge benefit that we, we, not that we miss, but that maybe we don't remember or think that's out there. Because I, I mean, I have to tip my hat off to the, to the individuals who are, you know, overseeing the, the group that we had this year, and we had, I think, seven, seven students this year. And they had to work hard at what they were doing and be flexible and understand when kids are late, you don't just fire them. Or if they make a mistake driving a, a piece of equipment, you don't fire them. You know, you coach them and you work with them and you teach them and you, you know, encourage them and, and show them. And so, I just wanted to point that out. So, thank you for that opportunity.
Yeah, absolutely. And thank you for sharing your enthusiasm, Mr. Pearson. I just couldn't agree with you more. It's, it's been, it's like, why haven't we done this sooner, right? Because it's been so great. And everyone's played a role. Ms. Page set up the infrastructure in HR so that we could, so that we could get these students ready for the employment. And then, you know, fifty percent of these students are, are, are going to be getting jobs because of this internship opportunity. The, the, the program supervisor over at Silverado told me that she had just, I think it was five of the students have been hired by Silverado, so based on their successful completion of the internship. So, it's just so exciting. And those are just the seeds that have been planted, even by, by the instructional services team, with all of this cross-division collaboration around creating these kinds of learning opportunities for our students. That was before the board set the priority. So, imagine now what we're going to accomplish, knowing that this is going to be an area of focus. So, we look forward to bringing forth evaluation results and really exploring with the board the tremendous potential that we have in the valley to really expand a program for this. And I'm just going to say it on the record, I already told Ms. Ready, this is going in for a Golden Bell Award application with CSBA next year. So, full accountability, because it's on the record. I, I've got to also shout out to technology. I, I don't want to overstate the number. I think it was, you, those of you that were there with me, was it fourteen thousand Chromebooks? The interns in technology, of which there were five, I think they repaired fourteen thousand Chromebooks this summer. Is that right? Or fourteen hundred?
Mr. Michaels, can you confirm that number, please?
Help me, someone.
Yeah, that would be probably closer to fourteen hundred. But we did inventory all fourteen thousand of our Chromebooks.
I knew I was off a zero.
A, a little problem with the zero. Notice the CBO double-checked that.
I was checking to make sure. So, yeah, so it was great. They, they, they know how to fix Chromebook, man. And they, they saved a lot of money for the school district, so they engaged in that repair. So, super excited about this annual priority. So, let's keep it going, team. Next slide, please. Okay, those are all the instructional priorities for the next upcoming school year. That, you know, in order to get all that work done, the district, the team, the board can never lose sight of the need to maintain fiscal stability. We cannot accomplish much if we are fiscally unstable and not fiscally strong and solvent. So, a lot of things go into creating that stability. So, we always like to set a priority around the facilities and the finance. And so, our annual priority is maximize operational efficiency and generate revenues locally to maintain fiscal stability despite economic volatility. This is, of course, connected to strategic plan goal number four, around tactical, proactive and efficient asset management. We have a lot of work to do here around our properties. We have a lot to reassess when it comes to Napa and a future school bond, based on what we just learned in that election that we almost won by a hundred thirty votes to ensure that we're positioned as a school district to be able to improve our facilities at the schools in the city of Napa, because we know American Canyon was successful with Measure A two. So, they're definitely set for the future in terms of their facilities. But we have more work to do here in Napa. We have some unfinished business to take care of. This annual priority makes sure that we are continuing to focus on that as an organization, because it's absolutely a necessity, given the way California is set up, and they don't fund facilities improvements. They rely on local communities to pass local bond measures to be able to engage in facilities improvement work for their students. Okay, long-range impact there. Next slide, please. Is ensure NVUSD has short-term and long-term plans to maximize all of its resources during both favorable and volatile state funding cycles. A district that is successful and can make the student achievement impact is one that has put systems in place to ensure fiscal stability despite all of the volatility that happens year to year with California school funding. You know, you just never know what's going to happen. That's how we're set up. So, we have to build the protective mechanisms that keep us strong and stable despite the chaos that might be brought forth by the state of California with its kind of unstable funding structure for, for its schools. Last annual priority, next slide. This is the one where we focus on the people, the most important asset that we have as an organization to accomplish all of the five other priorities. This is, of course, the work of Assistant Superintendent Dana Page and her team. And we've really, this year, when we were thinking about what would be the good human resource priority to focus on, given everything that's going on, we really want to focus on cultivating leadership development and capacity building amongst all employee groups. We, in the post-pandemic world, there's a lot of dilemmas out there in our school environments. And we want to really position employees to be able to feel empowered to solve those developments and, and find the answers within themselves with the support of their leaders, their managers, the administrators that operate all of our schools and departments. And so, you heard about the Arbinger Institute. That is a partner that we have chosen to give us the framework for leadership development. And what makes us unique is sometimes school districts choose to focus on leadership development, and they focus on people that have formal management titles, you know, as leaders. That is not our approach. We see everybody in our organization and even our students. You know, student, Board Member McGrath participated along with our alternate, participated in our training with the school board. We see students also having the capability of, of being leaders in our system. They're going to play a huge role in our strategic plan development. They're going to actually launch the process next month. So, just the spirit of leadership development in that everyone in the organization can be a leader. We feel like if we adopt that stance and ethos, we are better positioned to make an impact on student learning. So, what's the long-range impact? It's to ensure that NVUSD is improving its organizational culture while creating a sense of belonging for all employees to thrive and grow as they experience effective leadership. Okay, and the last thing I'd like to share, the next slide, please, is we always adopt the annual priorities that guide the work of, of staff and what they'll focus on, keeping the main thing, the main thing. But given governance is always critical to being able to accomplish that work, staff's work. We always commit as a governance team. There's twelve governance standards articulated by the California School Boards Association. And we pick a governance standard to hold me accountable to as a superintendent that I will work on with the school board. And so, the governance standard that we chose is recognizes and respects the differences of perspective and style on the board and among staff, student, parents and the community, and ensures that the diverse range of views inform board decisions. We think it's a great year for this, given that we're going to do this, this really robust community engagement process. We're going to go out and talk to a lot of stakeholders. We've already started to do those one-on-one interviews. We're going to do a lot of community meetings. So, we know, we're inviting the community to come and express their voice and weigh in on the visioning and the planning for our future. So, we, we couldn't imagine a better governance standard for this year, given the work that we're about to implement. This, of course, aligns to strategic plan goal number six, around strategic impactful governance and policy implementation. And we're so lucky that the board adopted a goal around governance, because how powerful that a governance team says, we're going to adopt a goal about us improving, improving our governance structure and model, because how can we ask change of the system across all the other areas if we don't model that commitment to continuous improvement? And those are the wise words of previous other trustee, Jose Hurtado, who was a huge advocate of making sure the board committed to ongoing continuous improvement as well, not just kind of asking for change here from the dais, but also of being part of change and improvement themselves. So, thank you for your leadership. And that concludes my presentation tonight of the twenty-three, twenty-four board annual priorities and selected governance impact. Oh, I forgot, long-range impact of that last annual priority. Thank you, Mr. Michaels, is to balance the input of all trustees and stakeholders to ensure that the board makes decisions that are informed by diverse perspectives. So, it also aligns nicely, I think, with our Arbinger Institute training to really, you know, listen to people as people. And we may have differences of opinion, but that doesn't mean because we have differences of opinion that we can't listen and, and, and hear people and their perspectives and, and understand that those perspectives add value, even though they might be different from our own. All right, now I'm done. So, thank you very much. Any question, comments by the board?
Trustee Jenkowitz?
Wonderful job of defining the goals. But I just wanted to make a quick comment about the process of this work, kind of what we do and how we do it. The priorities process obviously is an important exercise for all the reasons that Dr. Mercedes stated. But in order for us to achieve success on behalf of our students, we need to define what success means to us and then where to take action first. And understanding the opportunities to consider drives that priority setting. Determining benchmarks for success, ensuring alignment with the strategic plan, as you said, are often based on a combination of abstract, impact-based and concrete output-based goals. So, it's a complex process. The priority setting can be useful, so we don't interpret priorities differently. The goal is like a collective clarity. We have conversations to address what the success indicators of each priority might look like, what data and evidence do we need to produce to meet those goals of the strategic plan. But it's important to understand the condition that allows for the priority setting as well as understanding what it explicitly and implicitly indicates. And we have set the foundation for the hard work upon us. And I think I'm going to take the liberty of saying that we are all looking forward to that work. But I think context is really important as we talk about how we, how we get there. You know, it just, it's, it's an important exercise. That's it.
Trustee, why?
Oh, well said, well said, trustee Jenkowitz. I'd just like to add that I'm going back and looking at goals one through six. And we see that student learning comes first, and that's as it should be. But the goals, the following goals are the foundation that support, that will support our students. And we need them all. We need them all. I particularly like goal six. I think we're all very mindful about, you know, how we do our jobs. And, you know, we all, we all approach it in a professional manner. And I'm really proud of our board for doing that. And thanks for remembering trustee Hurtado, because he was concerned about that. And another former trustee was trustee Shunk. And he was always very concerned about, you know, our fiscal model. And, you know, all, we need all of this to be a success. Our employees recognizing leadership in our employees. I remember when, when Mr., Mr. Pearson told us about hiring, hiring someone to be a bus driver. And I think that's wonderful. I think it's wonderful. I think it's great that we give our employees opportunities to stretch. And tonight, we actually moved people up who've been working for us, moved them up into school leadership positions. And that's great, too, when we've got our, when we can cultivate our in-house talent. So, I think this is a wonderful plan, but our students come first, number one.
So, student board member McGrath? I just want to piggyback off what you said about providing the jobs to the students. Last year, we had a career day, virtual career day in Napa High. And one thing, that was a big positive for a lot of our students. And one thing, that was a big positive for a lot of students was having like the trades represented. So I think that was something that you said that scouts me. And I think it's really good that we offer that education to our students so that they're able to know jobs that don't require a college degree.
And I would just highlight that this is just one of the reasons that we're being studied for the path to good governance and point out that good governance is not really a goal that you ever achieve, but it's just something that you continually work at and work towards. And this is one of the tools that we use to continually move towards that better governance structure. So I think this is a good thing.
And I'll just conclude by saying I look forward to being evaluated according to these priorities. It's always really powerful to have clarity around what we're evaluating in terms of the superintendent's performance. I think it creates an incredible amount of accountability and make sure that we're getting good work done for kids. So thank you for setting that clear direction.
Okay, our next item is J two, instructional services, J two A, restarting accountability in the California dashboard.
All right, good evening again to all. And thank you for the opportunity to present on behalf of Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings and our instructional division. Next slide, please. We'll just move on to a more manual way of doing this. Okay, there we go. So our intention with this presentation this evening is to provide some context around the accountability for you as we're requesting that approval of the 202324 School Plans for Student Achievement. The California Department of Education is reinstating some of the accountability measures that were paused during the pandemic years. So I will speak to you briefly about the California School Dashboard and then provide an overview of the accountability structures that we have used to guide our development of our SIPs this year. Next slide, please. So as a reminder for the board, and this may be new information for some of our NVUSD community members, the California School Dashboard is an online tool that was developed by the California Department of Education to provide information and data about various aspects of the K-12 education system. It was introduced as part of California's Accountability and Continuous Improvement System for Schools. So during the 2019, 2019 and 2021 school year, the California Accountability Systems, again, were paused due to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on school systems. So the accountability measurements and requirements resumed in 2022 when the dashboard was released again in December of last year. So because of the pause in previous years, only current data was shared last year and was reflected on the dashboard. There was no growth data, as there typically would be on the California dashboard. So the current year results, as you see on the slide, fall into one, five status levels ranging from very high to very low. So the 2023 dashboard, which will be released in December of this year, will include both the growth and current year status. Next slide, please. So the dashboard provides information on these six indicators. So there are two academic indicators, those being ELA and mathematics. Chronic absenteeism rates were calculated on the 2022 dashboard. The college and career indicator was not calculated on the 2022 dashboard, but will be on the 2023 dashboard. The English learner progress indicator, graduation rate and suspension rate were all included in 2022 and will be again included in 2023. Next slide, please. So there are three classifications that can be assigned to schools based on dashboard results under the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is a federal education law that governs K-12 education policy. So the two classifications that are currently enacted in California are comprehensive support and intervention, or CSI, and additional targeted support and intervention, or ATS I. So this slide reflects information about comprehensive support and intervention. These classifications are part of the Accountability and School Improvement Framework established to help identify and support schools that need assistance to improve student achievement outcomes. So the main difference between ATS I and CSI is the level of support and intervention required for schools. Under CSI, schools are identified that need more comprehensive, more intensive levels of support for select student groups. So based on the indicators that I shared on the previous slide, additional funding is also available to schools that qualify under CSI. NVUSD, I wanted to note, did have two schools previously that were CSI qualifying schools, Valley Oak and Snow. And both of those schools, through their performance, exited CSI status this last year, which was good news. So the next, next slide, please. The next, the next category qualification status would be, schools could be identified as ATS I. And those are schools that have specific needs related to specific subgroups. And those subgroups might be English learners or students with disability who are continuously performing at lower levels than their peers. So these schools that are listed here have, will receive targeted support interventions to address the needs of the identified subgroups and improve overall performance. There is no additional funding that comes along with ATS I status. So I wanted to also point out that nine of the schools here listed qualify solely on the basis of chronic absenteeism. So a chronic absentee, chronic absenteeism rate, high chronic absenteeism rate is the reason that there are significantly more schools across California that are qualifying for ATS I status. So I also wanted to point out that schools can exit ATS I status by making improvements, one, a 1% growth, percentage growth on, on the academic indicators, the English language progress indicator, graduation, graduation rates, or one, reduce suspension and reduce suspension and chronic absenteeism by one percentage point. That's how schools exit ATS I status. Next slide, please. So again, we're sharing this information with you this evening because for the ATS I eligible schools, their school plans for student achievement all contain specific goals and action steps related to the student groups that are in need at their specific school sites. So the instructional division team worked closely with principals in the development of these goals and the related action steps. And we will continue to provide targeted support to the schools as they meet to, as they work to meet the goals that they have set in their student achievement plans. So that concludes my report. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
I'll take questions then from the board. Seeing that there are none, thank you for your report. Thank you very much. It is now almost nine o'clock. It's been two hours since we started this meeting. So we will be taking our approximately five minute break. And we are back from our break. We will now move on to item K, which is action items. Item K one, human resources. Item K one A, request to hire educator less than fully credentialed.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Right, student board member McGrath.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K one B, amendment to adult education, 228 day work calendar for accounting technical position.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, student board member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Objections, abstentions, motion passes. K two is instructional services. K two A, agreement with Dreambox Learning Marketing.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member McGrath. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. K two B, agreement with DLM Educational Services.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
I just wanted to take a brief moment to discuss this item. I wanted to highlight this program for the clarity between the annual priorities the district has set and the attempt to achieve that priority by hopefully passing this agenda item. It's unusual that a single agenda item would address so many of the success indicators of a single priority. And I'm excited to see how the results of this contract turn out. Seeing no other discussion, student board member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, motion passes. Item K two C, the 2324 School Plans for Student Achievement for elementary, middle, and high schools.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student board member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, opposed, motion passes. K two D, memorandum of understanding with Napa County Office of Education for the California State Preschool Programs.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There's no public comment on this item.
Student board member McGrath.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstentions, opposed, motion passes. K two E, recycle of obsolete mathematics instructional material surpluses.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
No public comment on this item.
Student board member McGrath.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K three, operational services. K three A, interagency agreement with Stonebridge School.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, student board member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K three B, interagency agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of Napa.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member McGrath.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K three C, purchase and services with casino restaurant and equipment.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K three D, contract with Napa Valley Backflow.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member McGrath.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K three E, surplus food service equipment.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member McGrath. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K four, school planning and construction. K four A, SPC number 1.3 dash 24 contract with Chodri and Associates for topographic survey services.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K four B, SPC number 1.4 dash 24 preliminary design services by QKA for vintage high school seismic and roofing projects.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student board member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. K four C, SPC number 3.1 dash 24, program and construction management by Van Pelt Construction Services for Measure H and Other Capital Improvement Funds.
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Mr. Michaels, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, student board member McGrath.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion passes. All right, now we're on to item L, information. Item L one, general services. Item L one A, curriculum and student support committee. There's no meeting.
Coming up, though.
I one B, facilities and technology committee. Again, no meeting. I one C, finance committees, also no meeting. I one D, policy committee, also no meeting. L two, business services. L two A, quarterly investment report, June 30th, 2023. Any discussion on this item? I just want to comment that with interest rates being at record highs, it seems like we ought to be taking advantage of these much higher rates of return. And what can we do to attain a greater return on our investment?
That's a great question, trustee Gracia. So school districts are required to actually keep their money with the county treasurer. We have, we have no ability to direct our investment choices. This was due to some large scale bankruptcies in the past. The other thing that comes in mind, too, to this, because I would say the rates, given the term that they can be invested in, are actually doing pretty well. If you think of a CD or something like that where it's locked up for a long period of time, these funds are invested in generally very safe instruments. And then they're required to follow the time horizon needed for cash flow for all the entities in the county.
Onto item M, additional suggestions and comments from board members and superintendent. Seeing none, we'll move on to item N, future agenda items. Seeing none, moving on to item O, adjournment. I move to adjourn.
Second.
First by myself, second by trustee Chu. All those in favor?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned at 9:20 PM.